Good evening, welcome to the Chatham Select Board May 25th, 2021 meeting. This is remote participation only, and please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order asserting certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, A, section 18, and the governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via my club teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast, I'm going to pass on channel 18 despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide access. Post of this meeting on the town's website is possible. We ask at this minute you mute your audio until the proper time to speak, and in order for us to have a meaningful exchange with you at the time we're speaking, and if you are able, please activate your camera. At any other time, please disable your camera or walk away from your computer. So right now, we're going to take a roll call of the select board, and I will start off with, with Select Board Member Kokolos.
Present.
Select Board Member Matters.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Board Member Nikastro.
Present.
And the Chair is present, so we have a, we have a forum, and so all, a full complement. So our first order of business is to accept the meeting minutes of May 18th. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May 18th?
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, are there any edits or adds to the meeting minutes? Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page five, let me get to it.
Sure.
The fourth, from the bottom paragraph, second sentence added, add a new sentence that would, an additional sentence, then it would start with, was mentioned, there were pub concerns with the existing free flow of traffic, and then continue on with the third sentence, which said, he said, I believe that's what I said.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any others tonight? Okay, seeing well, let's take a vote to approve. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
The Chair says aye, okay, meeting minutes approved from last week. All right, our next order of business is public announcements and item requests. I have one myself, I just wanted to mention, last week had mentioned when we were talking about the water conservation mandate, whether we should be considering a committee or something similar to the recycling committee, and I just want to throw it out there to my fellow select board members to, to pine it over, and maybe you can get some feedback from the manager as well as to the viability of creating a committee that would educate the public on water conservation programs, and, and order for us to be more sustainable with our water stumps. Other than that, I don't have anything else. I do want to check in with board members to see if anybody else has one. Peter Kokolos.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have, I have two. The first one has to do with Memorial Day. Channel, channel 18 will broadcast our 21 Memorial Day presentation on Monday, on Memorial Day, at 10 o'clock on Comcast channel 18. It will also be premiering on YouTube at that time, and the video will continue to be available on YouTube after that. I, I just want to make a comment, it's, it's be a little bit different than, it's a virtual one only, of course, for now. It's a, it's a different Memorial Day, presentation than what we've had, event than we've had before, and these guys are putting in a lot of time into getting interviews and doing enough things, so it's, I haven't seen it, but I thought it's, it's going to be worthwhile, and I know someone who saw the first part thought it was just excellent. So I recommend that everybody do that. Memorial Day is one of those days that is unlike any other, especially if you've, you have, you know, any, any relatives, friend, or whatever that have been in the military, passed away. In any case, that's my first one. The second one is, I wanted to mention that the Chatham Men's Club had a, had their final meeting last Friday, and as part of the main program, normally they used to do, I'll say, they had peach and beer at the VFW was what they did, but they did it much, much their job virtually this time around, which had to do with celebrating Carl's early, upcoming 100th birthday. And there was a video, I mean, they did a video of it, and if you know Carl, if you've ever been to the bandstand in the summer, and you've heard a saxophone solo, that was Carl. Carl was on, his family was on, the band members were on, they played, you're going to get more than just talking, you're going to get a music. Interesting, I don't know if I look that good when I'm 80, or my 100, you look great. So I'd recommend that you do that. The problem with being it on YouTube is, you can't really get to it if you have a link. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll put myself up here. Just send an email to me, and I'll send you the link. I'm going to send it to the, to the board, but it's P. Kokolos, P. C. O. K. O. L. I. S. at chatham-ma.gov, and I'd be happy to send it. I don't need more emails, but I would be more than happy to do that. Can't remember that one. Go on our website under the board, there's my email, all of our emails. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, any other board member have a medium announcement? Okay, we do Dr. Dunkinson, and he has his hand up. Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to update board as well as the community on some upcoming construction work that's going to be starting in the next couple of days, involving the Lake Street, Stony Hill Road, and Crow Road area. So if you bear with me, let me share my screen here, because as frequently the case, visuals are always better than simply talking about something. So the first one that I want to show you, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
This is the area, this is the area where the construction's going to take place. You probably are familiar with the fact, we did do some sewer construction on Stony Hill Road last, the last couple of months or so, in anticipation of this next project's coming up. The sewer construction is all complete, but the main focus of this project was a stormwater project to address some of the fling issues that we've experienced on Crow Road in the recent past. And so the town came up with a, a plan that involves mitigating the stormwater issue by basically replacing the entire stormwater system from the point where it discharges into the old cranberry bog at headwaters of Frostfish Creek, which is right up where it's in red saying zone one, and then replacing all stormwater infrastructure, coming down a short section of Stony Hill, down Lake Street, and then towards the intersection with Crow Road. Basically, we did an analysis of that section of the stormwater system in the last two years. The system is undersized for the volume of flow that it gets, so the pipe was in relatively difficult shape. So as part of this project, we're basically replacing that whole entire system. We took the opportunity to also do the sewer, and then there's also some water main work going to be done as part of this, because we, as part of the engineering, we determined that there was a dead-end water main on Lake Street. Basically, we're going to extend that water main all the way out to Stony Hill Road, and create a new loop, which obviously, you know, we always try to create loops in our systems and avoid dead ends. So that work is going to be starting here soon, and it will necessitate some detours. So let me close this one out and share the next one. This is the first detour that will be coming up. Some of the detours are relatively short because of the area we're working in, but when they work in work zone one, which is part of Stony Hill Road, right near where the discharge to Frostfish Creek is, they will have to shut down Stony Hill between Crow Road and, it's going to be Lake Street. So you see, the detour will be relatively short, you'll just come down Crow Road, and make the turn back up Lake Street, and then right back over to Stony Hill Road. And that work is estimated to take about 10 days or so to do that. And part of the reason why it's so difficult is we had to custom make a fair number of stormwater structure, because as you, as you know, from driving this area, it's relatively fat, and so in order to get the water to flow downhill as stormwater does, it's exceedingly complicated work in terms of fitting in new stormwater infrastructure, which is much larger in size, working around all the existing utilities, and still getting the necessary pitch and all in the pipe. So it's, it's not a huge area, but it's somewhat complicated work. So this will be the detour for work zone one, and then once that is completed, we will move into work zone two, and this one unfortunately does require a longer detour, because we're basically working that intersection of Stony Hill and Lake Street, and so you'd have to come back up Old Harbor Road, and then Route 28 to get back to basically Route 28. If you're heading into Chatham, you will not be able to simply go from Stepping Stones Road up Stony Hill, Route 28. So that unfortunately will require a longer detour, but we anticipate that that work will only take about five days, because it's a relatively short segment, but unfortunately, it is right in the intersection. Then, once that is completed, we will transition into work zone three, which is primarily on Lake Street. So again, the detour will be relatively short, you'll basically just, if you want to get onto Stony Hill Road, instead of using the Lake Street shortcut, you'll just come up Crow Road till you get to Stony Hill intersection, and you'll go right up Stony Hill Road. So that again is a relatively short tour. That is expected to take about 20 days, and we've been coordinating with Stage High Marine, as well as Lake Street tests, to ensure their access to those locations during all of this area's construction. And once that work is completed, we will transition into zone four. Again, unfortunately, will require the longer detour, because we are going to be working on Crow Road right in, near the intersection with Lake Street. And obviously, as you can see from these figures, all the detours will be appropriately marked. We will have detail officers at all these locations during the detours. Roads will be open at night and on the weekends, so these are just during the workday. I'm sure folks have questions as to why we're doing it, it's time of the year. It was really a question of because of the, none of the specialized stormwater infrastructure components had to be custom-made, and so we had to wait for them to all be delivered before we started any of this work, to shorten the detour as much as possible. And we also picked years when there was pretty much no other construction going on in Chatham, or in any of our neighboring communities, so you weren't always hit one detour after another, trying to get around town. And then the third component that factored into time of year was avoiding the school year as much as possible to minimize any impacts on the school buses. So as I said, that work will be starting shortly, and hopefully will be finished on time, and in order to enable us to go ahead and minimize any of these detours as much as possible. We will be getting this information up on the website, as well as on channel 18, so that everybody can, you know, plan their trips appropriately. Hopefully, once this done, not hopefully, but once this is done, all the construction in that area, stormer, sewer, and water will all be completed, and we won't be looking at having to do any work in this area, again, for the foreseeable future. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. Sheen, you're muted.
Thanks, Bob. So the construction, if there was to potentially have a 4th of July parade route in that area, would it be, would it be possible, or is the area need to be closed at all to any difficult kind of like scenarios? Or is that just too soon?
I would, I would think that July 4th parade would not be impacted, because during the July 4th parade period, I'm just looking at the schedule here, it would only be the Lake Street area would be closed down, Crow Road and all would still be open. But we can also make sure the contractor and coordinate with PD as well, you know, if there's any issue, to ensure that the road is open and passable when you decide to have a parade either on Saturday or Monday.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I know you mentioned, just want to make sure I asked correctly. We communicated with both the schools about this project, I would assume, because obviously interruption to bus routes, but for anyone who has kids, that's a huge parent pickup drop-off, you know, scenario for both schools. So any communication that could go out through the school system to any student's families might be beneficial too. So that's my only thought.
Yeah, we'll, I'll be sending these figures out, probably tomorrow, and school is on our list, they will receive them all as well. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other staff have, or board members? I don't see any. Anybody from the remote participants, general public have any questions or announcements? Elaine Gibbs? Hey, Elaine.
Yes. Thank you. I had seen the warrants in the post office. I was wondering, they've been mailed out to residents yet? What's the timing on that?
Okay, thanks. Jill or Shawna, is there, is that, can you give us an update on mailing?
Yeah, we had anticipated that they would mail it out by the end of this week. Printers mailing them and preparing them for the post office directly, so we have to have them with two voters 14 days in advance, and as Elaine had said, it is posted and available on the website, but each household will be getting a warrant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So when are they being mailed out? I'm sorry, it's just that it, by end of this, we should be receiving them in two weeks by this Saturday, but are we going to have them by Saturday or not? I misunderstood, didn't understand the answer.
Shawna, I don't know if, have you gotten a status report from the printer yet, but that's our, our, is to get it out by Friday.
Right, that was their target date. I will check in with them in the morning. I haven't heard.
Okay, then we won't get them until following week, because it's a holiday. So we won't get them until Tuesday or Wednesday of the following week. Okay, thank you.
Okay, they are available at the post office if anybody wants to pick one up there, and as Jill said, online on the website. Okay, thanks. All right, we're gonna, I'm just going to do a quick review of tonight's meeting. I did that last week, and Dr. Bob told me that I hadn't. Just wanted to say that our business agenda, we will have coronavirus update, which will include the Independence Day Committee, public weigh-in on this, or ask questions, and then we'll have the public comments, which are part of our business agenda, which includes recovery, build, alternative peer group, consider requests for special one, wine and malt, town landing special use permit, request for fireworks on June 1, July 1, and a West Chatham roadway project update. After the public comments, we'll have a consent agenda to, to vote to, on seasonal closure for our shelf areas, certain shelf areas, and then we'll go to a public hearing for consider for transfer of an alcohol, alcohol beverage license, and the board itself will move into its business agenda discussion and then adjourn. So with saying that, I will open up new business and ask for an update coronavirus update from our Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson. Bob?
Good evening. Thank you again, Madam Chair. So just quickly, quick recap of numbers as of 5:00 afternoon, Barnstable County had 13,879 cases of COVID-19, and that is cumulative since the beginning of the pandemic over a year ago. And that was an increase of six cases from the previous day, but I think more importantly, only an increase of 75 cases from last week. As the board public will remember, now back two months ago, ten, three months ago, we were averaging over 75 cases a day in Barnstable County. Now we've had 75 cases in the past week, which reiterates once again that the panic is coming under control. It's not over, but it is coming under control. In Barnstable County, cumulative since the beginning, we've had 467 deaths of county residents. That is an increase of one death from the previous day, and also an increase of only one death from a week ago. So this time last week, your meeting, we had 466 deaths. We are now up one at 467. So that again is a substantial improvement over what we've seen in past months. In Chatham, currently have 326 cumulative cases since the beginning of the pandemic. We have seen cases so far in May this year, which continues on track, be comparable to where we were May a year ago, and we have four active cases right now, meaning we have cases within their 10-day window from the time that they indicated, or they got their positive test result back. We have had 30 deaths of Chatham residents since the beginning of the pandemic, and that number rightly has not changed at all in recent months. So again, that is great news. So let me just share my screen here to show you a quick couple of figures as we always do. The first one I'm going to show is the statewide breakdown by age group. We started showing this one the last couple of weeks, rather than showing the Chatham distribution, because the Chatham distribution is pretty well even itself out. This is data as of last Thursday, because this data only comes out from the state once a week. And again, I just want to highlight that our two age demographics are coming for the highest number of cases now on a statewide basis for the last two weeks, as of last Thursday, are the 20 to 29-year-old age demographic and the 30 to 39-year-old. So again, we continue to see that it's the, the younger demographics that are now bear brunt of the cases, opposed to, you know, last spring, summer, fall, and winter of this year, when it was actually older demographics. Again, that's just a sign that the vaccine is highly effective in knocking down cases among folks that are now highly vaccinated, considering that the older age demographics are the ones that have been eligible for the vaccine the longest. In terms of Chatham-specific vaccine percentages, this is data as of last week. So again, this data only comes out on a weekly basis, and the figure is slightly different from ones that we've seen in the past, because the state is now providing a breakdown to the youngest age demographics. So to six, they've broken it out into 16 to 19-year-olds, which are eligible for the vaccine longer, and now 12 to 15-year-olds are eligible for the vaccine. So the state is breaking those two groups out separately, just to show how they're doing. Now, we have less than 30 vaccinated individuals in Chatham, and 12 to 15-year-old age demographic, that is why the state doesn't report them. When you have less than 30 individuals, that hopefully will change here shortly. But I think the real interesting thing is in the 16 to 19-year-old, we have over 80% of that age demographic on a per capita basis in Chatham have received the vaccine. And you can see, it's pretty evenly split between those that are partially vaccinated, or those that are fully vaccinated, and by fully vaccinated mean they've received both doses, a two-dose Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, or they've received single-dose J and J vaccine. So you can see, it didn't take too long for that age demographic catch up to some of the older demographics. Unfortunately, the 20 to 29-year-old demographic right now is showing the lowest percentage, but even there, we're at 66%, which is not bad. And then obviously, the older demographics have the higher percentages, considering they've had access to vaccine the longest, and we're also seeing the percent of those individuals that are quote "partially vaccinated" continue to drop as more people get their second dose of the two-dose Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. So this just continues to show how effective the vaccine is, and why Barnstable County has one of the highest vaccination rates in Massachusetts, and why Massachusetts has one of the highest vaccination rates in the entire country. So hopefully, that good news will continue as we go forward here. You know, the state later, actually, as of yesterday, the state has discontinued their pre-registration for vaccinations. Pretty much, you can go to any vaccine clinic, it'll walk up now, because the state felt that really pre-registration system was no longer needed because of the fact that vaccinations are so easily accessible, both at mass vaccination sites, county sites, private pharmacies, health centers, and others. Most places are now pretty much simply walk up to get a vaccine. You no longer need an appointment. And the state had also announced that later in June, they're going to be standing down the state's mass vaccination sites, just because of the fact that, you know, so many people in Massachusetts have already gotten the vaccine, as well as it's so readily available. And then the only other thing, just two other quick things I wanted to touch on, I'm sure everybody aware, that as of May 29th, this coming Saturday, basically, all the restrictions on businesses and other entities in Massachusetts will be lifted, and the mask mandate will shift over to a mask advisory. But again, both CC, as well as the state, are still recommending that unvaccinated individuals can still continue to wear that unvaccinated individuals can still continue to wear a mask in most situations. But you're no longer required to wear a mask outdoors if you're fully vaccinated, meaning two weeks have passed from either your second dose of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine or your single dose of J and J. So that all continues to be good news. There are however, certain circumstances where masks will remain mandatory for the immediate future, namely public transportation systems, private transportation, such as Uber and Lyft. You know, if you're carpooling with non-household members, if you're in a healthcare setting, if you're going to a hospital or health clinic, your doctor's offices, or if you're in a, a congregating facility, in those kinds of areas, wet masks still will be mandatory even after May twenty-ninth. So I urge everyone, we will have the new information up on our website for the mask advisory. I haven't put up yet because I didn't want to confuse people too much. It doesn't take effect until the twenty-ninth, although I'm sure most people have heard about it and, and know what their situation is. And then I'm sure Town Manager Goldsmith will update board and the public as well on our, we've had a, we had a meeting earlier today with, uh, opened the town staff to get input on our reopening plan for town offices, and I'll let Jill provide an update on that. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions from the board for Bob? Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was it feedback or someone talking?
No, it's feedback, Corey. Just give it a, yeah.
All right. All right. Here we go. Still getting feedback. I'll give it a try.
Okay.
So with the, um, the twenty-ninth and the lifting of the various mandates, I just heard a, not really a question, but you kind of just put it out there as a, as a burden in talking to some, um, other merchants that just to make the public aware, you know, certainly, every shop is going to kind of be on their own policy. They may or may not require masks, masks to be worn inside their establishment. They may or may not impose certain type of capacity limits or, you know, whatever protocols they may choose. So I would just say, you know, support the local businesses and the merchants and the shops and the restaurants. You know, there's a lot of strong opinions out there and you gotta be respectful to each individual entity. And I think every business is gonna do what's best for their business, their staff and public. So I think that'd be certain, certain easing, you know, certain kind of, um, business may ease into it a little bit slower than others. Some maintain it for the entire summer. I have no idea. But this is be respectful to everyone and try to make the best out of getting through the summer and heading back to the direction we, we all want to head. So, um, that's just the comment I just wanted to make. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Uh, Corey, the Rejoining Task Force have been working on signage to help the local business. I think they'll be coming along very quickly. But I also, you know, we shouldn't shame anybody that continues to want to wear masks. And I think we need, as you said, to have lots of patients this summer and, and with, with everybody. Dean, do you have a comment?
Yeah, but I think Bob had his hand in response to something Corey said.
Okay, Bob.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say Corey made an absolutely valid point. You know, even though the mask, the mandates and all go away on the twenty-ninth and the state of emergency is going to be lifted on the fifteenth of June, COVID has not gone away. COVID is still here. It's still in our community. It's still in Massachusetts. And, you know, being a tourist nation, we're going to be getting a lot of people coming here from other parts of the country where vaccination rates aren't as high. You know, COVID is still serving in some places, not anywhere near to the levels it was before, but it is. So just because there's dates on the calendar when things change, COVID is not going away. So, you know, all these precautions, still prudent things to consider. And Corey's absolutely right. Individual businesses are able to make their own decisions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Um, Dean?
Yeah, Bob, I just wanted to ask with respect to signage, uh, who are you? Is town contemplating any changes in the electronics signs that we have posted? For example, at the either end of Main Street or elsewhere in town? What will, what will the new messages be on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Are we taking them down?
We did take them down after the, we, we discontinued their use after the Board of Health rescinded their low mandate. I have been toying with some language that basically says, you know, not vaccinated, please wear a mask. Because that is the, you know, that's the guidance from the CDC and the state. You know, uh, we're, we're trying to get the word out to people in a nicer fashion. So I think that may be the message on those message boards. You know, I, I've also been toying with the fact that we also want to get the message about the water, mandatory water conservation measures. So it's been like, okay, which, which one of those is, is more important to get across right now? Uh, but I think we will come up with some revised signage on those signs in the next day or so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
All right, you're welcome, Dean. Any other board members have questions? Okay, I see that Ira Seldon, it could be a select board member, uh, Seldon.
It's Florence. Iris always shows up.
Yes.
Made a, you just made a comment, uh, uh, Shereen, that I think about shaming people on us. I think we need to be very careful of that. The research, new research, and Bob, I'm sure will be able to say this, shows that people who are taking immunosuppressant drugs, and that means people who have cancer and are, are in remission, but are taking drugs, people for, for that immunosuppressants and other such diseases absolutely should wear a mask. They, it has been shown that the, neither the Pfizer, nor Moderna, nor Johnson have a hundred percent protection or even eighty, eighty percent protection for those people. And I think it's very important to understand that those are people, maybe, you know, they stay away from all shops. They stay away from downtown, but it's very important they do wear masks. And I think it's part of the job of the select board to recognize the health issues of those people. I mean, I know a lot of people in this community, young and old, who are taking those immunosuppressant drugs. And I think we need to be very mindful, not use the word, we'll shit, don't shit people. It's an absolute necessity for those people. Thank you.
Thank you. It's all noted. And, you know, we do have to consider our, uh, you know, though we know many people have immune suppression issues. But, you know, we do have a big elderly community and, and it's important that everybody be safe and well.
It's not just older people, Shereen. It's also young people in our community.
I did, that's what, yes, that's what I mentioned. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Florence. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Dunkinson before we move to Town Manager? Okay. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so we are working on reopening, vamping a public access plan that we plan to present to the select board next week, so on June first. And in preparation of that, we held an all-staff call today on teams just to check in with staff about the required measures and steps to be taken to induce members of public to town, into town buildings. And what's known at this time about what's required, what isn't, and, and everything that Bob has reported that has been coming down the line for us. So, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, the employees who were not eligible for vaccination earlier, we just had a vaccination clinic last week for a second shot for town employees. Also, I think front workers and others had participated. We still have fourteen days for those employees to be fully vaccinated. And want to also remind everybody that town offices have been, uh, open for business, but closed for public access. So we talked about today about still encouraging people to use the drop boxes, which we found had successful, um, online efforts for permits and stickers and so forth. But we'll also plan, we'll also present a plan about what the ramping for public access will be for each building with a recommendation. I have an internal team working on that and the call today and digesting that. We're putting something together for the packet, which you'll have on Friday.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Jill?
Just a comment, you, Joe, for that. I, I, uh, board liaison to the Library Board of Trustees. I know that they had discussed how the library is going to reopen, particularly over the summer, where a huge, huge ma, uh, number of people who use that library in the summer months have always been historically people that, not year-rounders, and, and there are visitors, some of them as well. There, although it's a pub, it's a municipally-owned building, the library is a, an independent operation. And they're gonna have their own, um, they're already working on their own, uh, protocols for reopening, which will be a very deliberate reopening. And so I would just encourage, uh, those members of the public who, who are fans of the libraries, as we all are, to pay attention to the, to the Public Library website for information on that, because it will, it would, it's not going to exactly be, I think, the, um, the town's protocols. It'll be a different schedule. So, uh, they can contact the library directly. I'm sure she would be very helpful in responding to any inquiries about that. Thank you.
Yes, and there's been collaboration. So while we won't have that included in our plan, there's definitely been outreach to the library and it, it, we might be closer, uh, the same protocols. But again, we're still working through them, so I don't want to make any announcements tonight as we work through it.
Thank you. Dean, Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Jill. I noticed last week when I, the first time I'd been in the, either of the buildings, uh, you know, annex and so forth, a number of physical changes took place, especially in, in the main large conference room. That's gonna take a little bit of work to get, I'm not, not going for detail. I think everybody has to understand a number of things were done physically in the building to keep our own people social distance, and so you turn meeting rooms into office space. Uh, and I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna have to go back and at least change some of that. You need to, uh, I guess the, the question is, you know, is that gonna take a long time? Or do you think that's gonna be relatively easy to do?
Yeah, I, I think for, so today what we did, uh, we had a department head meeting where I was able to be in person in a large meeting room and we had the department heads participate via Teams. And so we're testing that hybrid technology out. And so the, the actual large meeting room, it's not set up with chairs, it, you know, eventually will be. It looks a little rough, but the dais is still there and it's the same dais that you had with some extra monitors as well, so that no one has to turn to look at the screen anymore from your dais. So you look right or, or presenters look from the podium. So that's a little different. And then, yes, we do have to work through, uh, workplace modifications in the permit office, well as the treasurer collector's office. There is a Plexi glass, um, window that will, that will not be, it will, it will stay in place. So nothing too drastic. The ramp up for public access does include a component for us to get ready at each of the town buildings, where some of the workspace was converted, or some of the conference rooms was converted to workspace. So that, this, so this internal team have been reaching out to all the satellite buildings and all to just figure out what our plan is, and then we'll present that next week.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Jill?
Yeah, thank you, Shereen. Jill, I was just wondering what kind of success we've had with the vaccination percentage amongst our employees? And for those folks that decide not to get a vaccine in a certain, sure, we're gonna be abiding by the CDC guidelines in terms of wearing masks, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I'm not allowed to ask who's vaccinated or not by, uh, by law, but, um, those who aren't vaccinated or don't feel comfortable will be wearing a mask inside town offices. So that's something that we talked about today. And again, same thing, no mask shaming. You know, people have the right to, to wear it if they're comfortable or, or whatever is going on. So, um, yeah, I, I don't, actually, I really don't know the number of those who've been vaccinated. Certainly can check in offline about who's registered for the clinics, but I just don't know if it's publicly available. I, I think that there's a very good percentage of employees, including pop safety, who have been vaccinated. And, um, you know, the, the benefits have been discussed at regular department head meetings and staff meetings as well.
Good, great. I wasn't looking for the exact numbers. I was just trying to get sense from you on how successful, it sounds like it's been successful. So thank you.
I think it has.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Jill? Any questions from the public for Jill? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Jill. We do have to talk about the Independence Day parade, um, for this year, reconsideration. We know that the Board of Health and the Independence Parade Committee have changed their consideration for, and have decided to make a recommendation. Well, Board of Health rescinded their, uh, their decision, but the Board, uh, the Independence Day Committee has, um, has voted to amend that the parade go forward. So Jill, do you have a, who's got the update for that to continue the conversation? I'm not sure we really, Corey, do you have any update from? You do?
Justin on the call.
Oh, Justin's here? Okay. Hi, Justin. I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Justin.
Don't worry.
Good thing.
Yeah, we did meet last Friday night and we, um, you know, after hearing what the Board of Health had to say and that they felt that it would be safe, um, we did feel we've been planning all year up until our, our meeting at the end of April. We had been planning all year for the possibility of going in either direction. So we did feel like we would reverse course at this point and, and go with an, with an in-person parade. We got input from Chief Lena that there'd be no issue with getting police details or anything like that. So we did vote to recommend to go ahead with it, um, with the feeling that if people were uncomfortable, they don't have to attend it. People can wear masks at the parade. People, you know, would keep the same route we had, so people would stay as spread out as possible. We did recommend to keep it on Saturday. Chief Lena did tell us that, um, you know, the police would whatever day was, was decided, but that he thought there would be concerns with some other things going on Sunday night. There need to be some police details for us. So, um, hang a parade Monday morning might put a strain on some officers with some details so that Saturday night, Saturday might be better. But we, we did vote unanimously to, um, to recommend going forward with it. So I'm happy to answer.
Great. Thank you. Corey?
Um, no, if you just bear with me, I think a couple of comments, because obviously this is a, this is gonna be a very difficult to sit for the board. Um, we've all seen the email that come through. And I guess for me, it's a fifty-fifty, certainly as far as people who have given, provide their input on how they feel. Uh, and we gotta acknowledge that there's a, uh, a variety of opinions and feelings, strong, uh, very strong feelings, one way or other. So, um, I want to be respectful of everyone's input. You know, the Parade Committee has done a wonderful job. They've, you know, been on base to, to plan this parade, uh, and they're, they've had the ability to pivot and in a direction of a, of a live parade this year. They've put their time in. They've planned very well. And I, and I commend them for their efforts and their continued effort, hopefully. So, um, like I say, this is, this is, there have been comments about this is a choice for people to come in and participate, which is true to a extent. Uh, I do think that, um, obviously with the parade route going from Broad Road, traditionally you go down the street to the set of stoplight, take a right down Coral Road. Uh, we're gonna, the recommendation is to follow the, um, traditional or the most recent, um, road, starting at nine-thirty, so same time, uh, Saturday. And, uh, you know, it will be a difficult choice on merchants, I think. Uh, I think some are gonna have to obviously start opening up earlier day. July fourth is with the detours and what have you, you know, you, you're gonna have to open up a little bit early, get down there, find a parking spot, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's standard call for any July fourth that anyone has ever been open for. You know, some businesses are gonna be stepped adequately, some may not be. So, uh, again, I'm just stressed to point that, you know, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident we're, the board to move forward with indoor state live parade this year. Uh, and for those who are uncomfortable about it, I respect that opinion. Um, but I gotta stress that we gotta have a lot of patience this year and a lot of respect for people's, um, feelings and also the, uh, respect for all the businesses, um, retail, food industry, you name it. Uh, because they're gonna try to put together the best program they have to survive this summer. Uh, and the staffing, um, some are still filling holes and, um, they may or may not be able to accommodate the, you know, people, uh, that just with their ability that they have in the past. So, um, you know, I'm looking forward to getting back to normal. Uh, I'm looking forward to, you know, having enjoyable July fourth parade and, um, you know, putting some of this behind us. I just want to keep in mind that, you know, it's gonna put a toll, not toll, it is, is gonna put a lot of effort, everyone's part. Both people providing considerations and people just being a nice neighbor, enjoying the parade if it moves forward and kind to your, the party store to you, uh, so, so we can all move this forward and, uh, be successful, uh, when the day is done. So, uh, this is my thoughts. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a point that we've all, you know, a lot of us have been wanting to get to, and, um, it's an opportunity to get back to what quote normalcy. It, it does, you know, it, there's a lot of layers. So I just want to just recognize that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Corey. Um, the Board of Health's, uh, decision to rescind, and it was not a unanimous vote, um, if I recall. I think there was one person did not vote in favor of it. It, that holds a lot of water for me personally. Um, we've been listening to the Board of Health and their guidelines all through the last, uh, over, over a year. And I think done a stellar job, uh, you know, recommendations for this community. So, um, their, their decision to rescind personally holds a lot of water in, in, in what I'm considering to my way of putting on this issue. Peter, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. I have a question first for, for Justin, uh, then I, they'll have a, a little longer comment. Uh, Justin, what, what kind of a parade is it going to be? I mean, you, you stop and you start it again. Is, is it gonna be something we're familiar with or is it gonna be something smaller? Or, uh, you know, we had inputs from people that said, don't have anybody walk, take your car, go farther, wherever.
I mean, we're gonna go on as normally do. Um, I suspect we'll have some few, a few fewer entrance than we have in the past. We're not gonna set, as far as we've discussed, we haven't talked about setting limits on people walking or not. You know, I, I think it's a matter of some people may feel that they can get their entry together in time. Things like bands that typically enter may not have been practicing together. Um, so there may not be a hundred plus entries. We maybe look at seventy-five entries, something like that. I, I don't know exactly, but, I mean, we're looking to host what would typically be the parade and it's just up to who enters. And, and, I mean, I think if it goes forward, people are just gonna be happy with having something at this point.
Okay, thank you. Now, yeah, here, here's where I'm coming from. And, uh, we're about, well, we're five weeks away, which is, and I was glad to hear that, that the, the Parade Committee was, uh, obviously doing, do, continuing their job. Uh, and we're moving towards a, um, more towards a, a, a pre-pandemic environment. I, I do, uh, take, I, I, I do appreciate what the Board of Health's done and we have been following, and I agree with that. Although there were a couple of caveats. First, let me say that, that, uh, I, there were two, two, uh, uh, let's call them, I, I did a anecdotal test with different people when, over the last week, and I agree with Corey. Just anecdotally, it's fifty-fifty whether they want a parade or not want a parade. And that's kind of interesting because it was broke, you know, it's not necessarily one family against other family. It's internal into a family. Now, this is just a small number. However, there are, there, 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 there was this, a study that was done that looked, uh, to have like eight hundred or nine hundred epidemiologists. And it came out basically the same, but the fifty percent that was, uh, said it's okay focused on the younger children. And their focus is they're not vaccinated, they're under the twelve-year-old, they should wear a mask. And that hasn't changed. So, so where are we in this? Um, I, I, I bopped around all weekend thinking about, uh, Orleans decided not to have a parade, which means we're gonna have a lot of people, I would assume. We're gonna think of what we're gonna have. Are we gonna have a lot of young kids that are gonna be pushed together, uh, and, and brought up towards the, uh, towards the center? You think, you can see where I'm going with it. I believe it's a personal responsibility of parents and whoever. You know, personal responsibility to either wear or not wear masks. But having said that, in the position that we're in right now, we have that many people put together and we're enabling potential, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not a, a fear monger, but, but we're, we're gonna enable uh, the ability of people who don't want to wear masks. Nobody's gonna say anything to them and we don't understand them. And young children who, yes, I understand, don't get as sick, but they could. I just don't feel it's right for us to enable that. Now, I can use that same logic that we're gonna talk about when we, when we get into fireworks. I don't have that concern with fireworks, a veteran, but I do allow the parade route. And I, I kind of, I'm leaning not allowing it. And I, and I'm surprising myself by saying, because I tend to be an optimist. But I really am concerned about the number of people that are gonna show up here. The differences that people have where they wear a mask or they're fighting on airplanes, they get in and, 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 uh, into, it turned into a political issue, which it isn't, you know, on whether or not they wear masks. I just don't think it's right for us to, to, to enable that kind of, 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 uh, an environment for people. We could, as much as I hate to say it, I go, I love the parade. Just wait another year. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Jeff?
Uh, I'm fairly in line. I really, I, I echo Shereen's sentiment about the health. They were proactive in, uh, having masks down, the wearing of the mask downtown, which I very much supported. And so I, I, I lean towards, uh, having the parade based on their, on their recommendation. The twentieth is a, is a signature date and the fifteenth of June is a signature date. When we're told that the emergency order is gonna be lifted on fifteenth of June. Parade is some two or three weeks thereafter. Uh, if, if folks are honest with themselves and if they aren't vaccinated, wear a mask, um, they ought to do so when it's in the parade. And for other folks that are worried about children and/or themselves, they ought to wear masks as well. Um, but I'm leaning towards having the parade. It's a long stretch here, folks. Since last March, forever, uh, we've shut down. And I think, um, I think folks really appreciate our having some kind of a parade. And so I, I'm gonna probably vote in their favor. Um, again, as on the fence, I've read all the notes. Uh, you can go fifty-fifty. I, I understand, but, uh, um, our, our, our committee decided to have it and can pull off, if they can pull off, you know, w- w- one, one half of what they've normed on, it'll be a great event. Um, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, especially leaning on the Board of Health. And I thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Dean?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just had a couple of questions first and then a comment. Um, and this is expected, I guess, that either Jill or, um, or Tista, uh, can this parade, if it takes place, be telecast live? I, I know Holly is always there with, uh, the camera and, uh, there's a nice, uh, video that is shown on channel eighteen review of it. But is it possible that this, that a parade could be brought, be telecast live so that people could watch it at home? Whoever wants to answer that.
I don't think it can be broadcast live. I know that they do record it, um, but a live transmission, I don't know. I mean, I could certainly quit them, um, or like Mark's on this meeting too. My, Mark Van Bork might be able to win. But as far as I know, they just, just record it.
Um, the, also, I mean, if we were set up for a Facebook page, we could totally do a Facebook Live sort of stream, um, issue, uh, issue. That would take somebody to do that. Uh, Justin, did you have a comment on that?
Um, no, I was just gonna kind of say you should be able to do either Facebook Live or maybe even YouTube Live. It may not be able to be on channel eighteen live, but it should be able to be broadcast live in some form, one of those avenues.
Not everybody is on Facebook, so, uh, YouTube Live might be, um, more accessible. The second question is, uh, do we know, uh, whether the Chamber of Commerce or the Merch Association has taken a position on this? I mean, Corey outlined some significant, uh, concerns for the downtown merchants. Do we know if they have a position on whether to go forward with the parade or not?
I don't know if they're on this call on the, on the meeting. I don't see any representatives here. Um.
You haven't heard from them, Justin. Have you at your committee?
Uh, we've not, no.
Okay. Um, well, my, my emails, and I think Corey, Corey needs to get a lot of emails in the parade because he's, he's the leader to the committee. My own emails, I think, have been running about seventy-five cent in favor of the parade. Um, so maybe I have some. Um, and, you know, I think ultimately it, it's a tough call and Peter talked about personal responsibility. And then I think that's hand in hand with mutual respect, whatever people's decisions are. I, I, I certainly place a lot of stock in the Board of Health. Um, I know it was a unanimous decision. I, I, we have four medical professionals on that Board of Health, three medical doctors and a nurse. Uh, and that doesn't include the chair who's, who's has multiple years of experience in public health. Um, and, and I respect, um, uh, their opinions. So that, that carries a lot of weight with me. And I, the fact that, um, although we're gonna be inundated with people from other states, the last statistic I, I heard, assume it must be higher now, is that, uh, three quarters of, of Massachusetts residents have been vaccinated. Uh, and that's stunning. I mean, I heard today that, uh, you know, Japan is, is worrying about what to do with the Olympics. Three percent of that country has been vaccinated. Um, so what a contrast. Um, and I, I guess my inclination is to want to open up and move beyond the pandemic. I think people are tired, uh, and they're tired of their kids having to be locked down, uh, and so forth. And, and the July event is, is a really big, big up in Chatham. So my inclination is to want to lean on the side of, of going forward with the parade and respect people's individual choices about how to or whether to, uh, attend it. Uh, and it's not, it's not an easy in, decision or inclination. And I, I really am interested in hearing, uh, we're gonna have public, this is one of those items. We, uh, open it up for broader comment from the public. And so I, I'm looking forward to hearing what folk have to say before I make a final decision. But I lean toward, toward, toward moving forward with the parade and, um, but I, you know, I respect people's decisions and opinions on, on, on this very, very difficult topic. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. I think that there's certain, um, messaging I would hope that the Parade Committee would, um, do in back to kindness and safety and, and personal choices. There's one thing that I really think we have to talk about and, you know, is passing out of candy, throwing, uh, uh, you know, goods and everything. We shouldn't allow it to happen this time around. It should definitely not be, it should be a no starter to have any of that kind of materials being handed out, any promotional material or anything, which might make for a great parade because it won't be one big advertisement for company. It will be definitely a, a celebration kind of thing. So I, I hope, uh, Justin, that your committee takes that into consideration if you decide.
I mean, last meeting, we discussed whether or not we wanted to recommend the head or not. We, we didn't get into those details, but that definitely makes sense. And, and we're meeting in a week again. So we definitely bring stuff up like that. And we're, we're open to, you know, whatever you guys want us to include in it, whatever the Board of Health wants us to. One of our members is also a member of the Board of Health, so.
Okay, great.
We can work with on, on whatever makes the most sense.
Okay. Well, uh, Dean, uh, isn't ready to make a, a decision or, or we're not ready for a motion yet until we hear from the general public? I see that Florence Selden stands up again. Um, and I, uh, if you want to go ahead, Florence?
Oh, sure. Or, yeah, I, I don't want to sound doom and gloom. And I love parade. Having been in, been in part of the parade for a long time and, uh, watching the parade for many, many years. But I do think you need to take into consideration, I, I agree with Peter because, and, and how do you say it? Of course, it's personal responsibility. But if you look at Dr. Dickinson's chart, fourteen percent of the confirmed cases in Massachusetts are children between the ages of zero and nine. And somehow, somehow, whether we get a message out, that's important to mask children. I have a friend whose grandchild, four years old, recently had COVID. You know, sick for a couple of days, but nobody really knows the long-term effects of COVID on the body of young people. So we need to be careful. Um, and again, I said, as Peter said, it certainly is individual responsibility. But I think, do think that we have somehow to, um, take this into consideration somehow in terms of mask wearing for children. And then I heard from two people that I know who have ho- housed along the parade route. And their concern is how do they prevent, they don't want people congregating in their front yards and on their lawns. And how do they keep that from happening? They're concerned about being in touch with people, again, a lot of people who are not wearing masks. Um, so I don't know how you're gonna deal with that. The young people issue is of concern to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence. Um, Elaine Gibbs, have your hand up, Elaine?
Uh, yes. Um, I guess I have a higher opinion of people and what to expect of them this July fourth than some of the comments I've heard to, here tonight. We've all lived through this for over a year. Seventy-five percent of us have been vaccinated or whatever number is. People take care of children. They don't take risks with their children. I don't think it's government's responsibility or right to, to suddenly remind you need to have your children wear masks. I think we have been there, that, we've heard the message. If people are concerned, they're not gonna go to the parade. If they are concerned, people are gonna close their, wear masks. I think we are a very civilized town. I don't think there's going to be brawls. I don't think there'll be fistfights. It's a family event and people will take care of their own children. And so I would hope that we open it up like done before. People are gonna socially distance. We spent a year and a half doing it, for heaven's sakes. We've, we practiced. And I think not to have the parade after the states open and they're allowing it, I think would be a huge mistake. So I hope we go ahead and do it and, um, lecture people, just let them take care of their own children. And I'm sure they're gonna do the right thing and want their kids to get sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Any other, uh, folks from the remote participants want to weigh in before we bring it to the board? I'm not seeing any kind. Yes, Pat, Herb?
Hi, this is Herb Bassett. Tried to get on last week, now couldn't make the phone work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When it comes to mask shame, uh, a woman really tried to mask shame me when we began all wearing masks and started to really give me a lecture at Stop and Shop. And when I finally could get word in, I just looked at her and I said, I do it because it makes my wife happy. You can't argue with that. And of course, you can change the round, who it makes my husband, my boyfriend, girlfriend, whoever. And I, I said it, it was the truth, but that's a great way to end the conversation. I seem to be in the minority as far as people, uh, who don't think we should have the parade. Our whole lives and our whole culture, uh, not only our lifestyle, but our vocabulary has changed with things like educational bubbles, family bubbles, all kinds of different bubbles. We've tried to live our lives and protect ourselves. I want people to pay attention to Dr. Bob's word by saying, yes, we've done a great job here on the Cape. But people will be coming in from all around the globe to Chatham, especially Orleans is not gonna have a parade. And we're gonna be packing people like sirens into the downtown area. I would ask you to consider this and these, as my last comment. We've lived our lives for the past year and a half around the parade, coming from a bunch for the past year and a half around the parade, coming from an abundance of caution. Everything, the town has run south, that's why we have the VO conferences and everything that we do, but it's out of an abundance of caution that we've lived our lives. And I think out abundance of caution and abundance of caution, we really should not have the parade. We're so close to being able to get out from under this. We're going to be needing booster shots, that seems to be the general consensus, and this virus is mutating as we speak in different parts of the world. So I think we really need to give some thought to that and set it as consideration before you take a vote. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Herb. Any other public comments? Any other remote participants would like to speak to the matter? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just another question for whoever wants to answer it. We talked, you brought up the idea about throwing candy and other things to the crowd. What about these transient vendors that are on bicycles, who are selling ice cream? Some of them come and get a license, and many of them don't. Do we have any concern about that type of activity? Can we, you know, should we, if we do go forward with the parade, should we consider enforcing against that? I don't know, you know, who has any comment on that. That's something I would throw out as well. Anyway.
Any comments? Jill, do you have a comment on that?
Actually, I think we discussed a couple of years ago, and that they would need a state permit, but I know Shawna, licensing agent on the line. Shawna, do you want to weigh in on this?
These vendors would require a state vending license, but we have not typically in the past had enforcement where they required to show it. We've only had one in the last few years who took the necessary steps to come to the board and get permission for the sales on town property that required by bylaw. I think really it's an enforcement issue at this point.
Yeah, some just show up. I remember that particular instance where we do to prove someone, but others just show up and show they're aware. Anyway, thank you.
All right. We need to move forward with this, either with a motion or further discussion. Anything, guys? Anybody want to make a motion? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm glad we have the Fourth of July parade this year.
Second?
I'll second.
Your second? Okay. Good discussion from?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I don't take this, you know, I did speak at length initially, and I don't take this well lately, but the fact that the Board of Health reckons it or says it's okay, the fact that the emergency order is lifted on the fifteenth holds a lot of water for me. The governor of the state, one can argue has done a good job or a poor job, but lifting the emergency order, the vast majority of our citizenry, our citizenry has been vaccinated. And I think if we get the message out that folks are expected, as they have for some fourteen-odd months, been very disciplined about their personal responsibility for both themselves and their family, if we get that message out, then folks that want to win will attend, and they'll attend and be circumspect and be careful, or they won't attend. So I think we leave it to the individual folks on whether they want to participate or not. But I want to also say that I really applaud Justin and his committee for the willingness to pivot links. And again, if they do get half the folks that they normally, it'd be a great, it'd be a great event. And in some ways, I look at it as a little bit of celebration of, you know, God, we kind of got this anyway. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, Peter, Peter comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a simple comment, you know, it's, I don't think that we're going to have brawls here. I just, you had example of people having a position, and that's fine. Every, my thought is, we have people that are come here from good places, they're going to have youngsters, they don't, they're not going to put a, if they don't believe in having a mask on, well, that's fine, but they're going to be here, but then their right to do that could impact someone else. And our individual rights are important, I believe that they're important, and how do they impact or trans, whether they trust us on other people's liberties, that's something else. So my point really is that I could have, I could go either way. And I'm not trying to make government do their, decide what we're going to do, but I, that's turning it into a political issue. I'm still going to vote. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Herb. Dean?
Yeah, I guess I echo what Jeff has expressed, and I respect what Peter just said. It's not an easy call, but when you've got the Board of Health, and I don't really want to, you know, put the ointment on them, but they know about medicine, public health than I do. And the governor, the governor has been extremely cautious with restrictions, more so than most other governors in the United States for the past many months. The fact that he presumably on advice of his public health advisors is lifting the state of emergency and opening things up on the 29th May, that carries weight with me as well. But again, it's not easy, not an easy call, and I think we have to hope and encourage people to exercise their personal judgment according to what they see is best for themselves and their families and for their neighbors. So I'm going to support going forward with the parade. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I'm going to support a live parade. I'm just going to stress a comment I made earlier. I just want to make sure we do some kind of public service announcement to the town, the parade committee, just making people aware that various businesses will have various policies and that we respect every policy they may have in place, effect to possibly be wearing masks some places, expect certain protocols. And together, you know, I think, I think the, we have a lot of bodies that move through this town. We always have on July 4th, anytime in the summertime. We have the capability of doing this. You know, there's always a chance there's going to be one bad apple in any situation, in any location. And I do think that we could get through this with the proper planning, and on July 5th, you know, look back and be like, hey, this was a great feeling to have a parade again, you know, hopefully the weather's, you know, nice. But I do think we can pull this one off, and I applaud the parade committee for keeping a path of having a virtual and a live parade in their back pocket, that they can pivot and move this forward with the efforts they've put forward in their meetings over the winter. So I applaud the parade committee. I know the community will support them. And again, there's two openings in the parade committee, so there's still plenty of time for people to step forward, so thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Elaine, your hand up. I don't know if that's an old hand up or whether that's a new hand up.
It's an old hand up. Sorry.
No worries. Okay, we'll go for a vote then. Okay? We're voting to recommend and move forward with the Fourth of July parade on July 3rd as recommended by the parade committee. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
No.
Corey?
Yes.
And the chair says aye. Okay. All right. Good luck, Justin. Thank you, thank your committee for what you're about to go forward with, and maybe we should have you come back prior to the parade to give the board an update and also to spread a message about protocols or whatever recommendations you may have.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you have your hand up quickly?
Justin, could you just remind us what the theme is? It is about sheltering in peace and to a new beginning. It's very fitting to the time we're in right now. Good, thank.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a few things to go forward with our agenda, and that was pretty the almost hour and a half discussion to get us to public comments. This is a time when the public may comment about our business agenda items, which I had mentioned before, were recovery, build, alternate peer group, consider request for special one-day wine and malt by refashioned Chatham, town landing special use permit, fireworks quest, and West Chatham roadway product. The presenters, of course, in the, will be speaking with us during their agenda item. Public comments this evening? Okay. All right, not hearing none. We're going to move over to our.
Riss ring.
Sorry. Go ahead, Elaine, I had my head down when.
Yes, thank you. It's up the West Chatham corridor, extending the time to June 18th. I just wanted Tom to tell us what it means to do the punch list. Apparently, Mass DOT creates a punch list, Lynch goes through and checks those off, and I'd like to know when the sign off is. Once that happens, are, is that it? Are they coming back in September? If there are issues that we notice during the summer? I mean, when is it that we are totally signed off if anything goes wrong, or there are some things that we want to change? That's the first one. And the second one, there's probably nothing to be done about it, but right now, the white line on the right side of the road, travel lanes, about, I think it's about two and a half to three feet, the white line for the bikes. And according to the dime, those are going to be five feet for the high-speed bike lanes, which is going to encroach further into those lanes between the two roundabouts. And I'm wondering if they'd rethink that. That seems like it's going to make the roadway a lot, it's narrow anyway, and it's going to be pushing the cars into the center. Probably not, but I would just point that out, that appears that those lanes are going to get narrower. So those are two things, the sign off and the high-speed bike lanes. Thank you.
All right, I've noted your questions for discussion. Okay. All right, so our next is the consent agenda. And there's, this is ocean, I'll accept a motion for seasonal shellfish area closure. This is an annual for Mill Creek, Taylor Pond, and Champlain Creek.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right. Okay, next is a public hearing, and I'm going to ask our clerk, Clerk Metters.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we typically ask the clerk to read the shellfish closure notice for the public benefit?
Corey, would you read the closures for the public benefit?
If we're not a consent agenda, yes, I wouldn't really read it, but I'm going to read it anyway.
I think we have, I think.
I think, yeah. All right.
I don't think we did the last time. Go ahead.
All right. Well, shellfish rules and regulations, May 25th, 2021, closed effective June 1st, 2021. Waters and flats of Taylor Pond, north of a line drawn across the mouth of the pond, are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Shellfish rules and regulations, May 25th, 2021, closed effective June 1st, 2021. Water and flats of Mill Creek, north of a line drawn in the western breakwater to the eastern breakwater at the mouth of Mill Creek and south of a line drawn across the mouth of Taylor's Pond are closed to the taking of shellfish until further notice. And finally, shellfish regulations, May 25th, 2021, closed effective June 1st, 2021. The waters, flats, and all tributaries of Champlain Creek, northwest of a line drawn from the outermost piling at the town boat ramp, northeasternly to the quote "no shellfishing" unquote sign in the marsh on the opposite shore are closed to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice.
Thank you very much, Corey. All right, so we've moved forward on that. All right, we're going to go to our public hearing notice, and again, we'll have Clerk Metters read the public hearing.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, at 5:30 PM remotely through the micro team's application. Consider a request for transfer of the seasonal all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license of Catman D Incorporated, doing business at The Bistro. Steve Vining, manager, to 593 Main Street Bistro LLC, DBA, The Bistro on Main. Angela Porter, manager, 593 Main Street, Chatham Mass, 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to attend, signed the members of the select board.
Thank you, Corey. Are the people's on? I think I saw the porters heading the meeting earlier. Just want to say welcome and just ask Shawna, all the paperwork is appropriately in place, Shawna? As our licensing agent? Okay. And, okay, are there any comments, or does Angela or Porter want to make a comment at all?
We just want to say we're thrilled to hopefully move forward with the legacy that Steve built, and we're so thrilled to be part of the town.
We will say congratulations on being the new owners, obviously, of the, or of the of the bistro, which is a real great restaurant in town. Look forward to going there, at least try to get there one year. Any comments or questions for the applicants? Dean, your hand up?
Thank you, thank you, and welcome, welcome to Chatham. Very happy that this is going to continue as a restaurant. And I certainly would, I think we all would commend Mr. Vining for his many, many years of service and work in the restaurant industry in downtown Chatham. I see he must be retiring, or certainly.
Yes.
Happy retirement. Just two questions, one which is, it just occurs to me as I see on your application, you were the owners of the Vieira restaurant in Harwich?
Yeah.
Curious, I didn't really follow, you know, the clothing of that particular establishment. I just wondered what led to that? Was it really a business decision? Were there any?
We, we had, unfortunately, could not work out an extension to the lease with the landlord there.
I see.
The building and the property were just, they didn't want to, you know, support that in any way. So hindsight, it was very fortunate because we made that decision just before the pandemic and carrying, trying to carry that business, the pandemic would have been a challenge. So on top of that, this kind of new venture came about. So in hindsight, it was a very fortunate turn of events.
Yeah.
We couldn't work out with the landlord.
With the timing, work, as you said, worked out well, and that's great. That really helps us, you know, take over the business in downtown Chatham. I was just curious, this too, I see you are the owners of the landyard in Harwich, so I just wonder, are you, what type of cuisine menu are you planning for?
So we, I, I worked for Steve for six years when he was upstairs on there, and him and when him and Miles were cooking, they influenced me greatly. I'm a chef, and I'm a chef because of them. So we're taking, he's always, Steve and Miles have always influenced my cooking, so we're taking some of Steve's old favorites and we're on with those, as well as some new stuff and some of the popular stuff in Vieira. So it's going to be very, very, very similar. We're gaining maybe eight or ninety percent of his staff. So it's going to be just a continuation of what Steve built with just minor changes.
When do you think you'll be up and running if you get the license approved tonight?
As soon as possible. We're actually operating under a management agreement with Steve. Steve is still involved as the owner, and when the license is approved, it's, the sale is finalized, and we just go.
I know a lot of restaurants, business in general, businesses in general, restaurants in particular, having staffing issues actually because of the whole COVID situation. Is that presenting a challenge to you as well?
Yes, it's an incredible challenge for both this space and the landyard. We're having to restrict hours, which puts a financial burden on us. And we're having to restrict what we can do. But there's, there's no, there's nothing else you can do. You just have to accept it and deal with it.
Yeah.
Do the best you can with what you got.
I think everybody knows that food service is very challenging business in any time, particularly now. But I wish you well and look forward to your menu. So, thank you. No further questions, sure.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Corey?
No, I just want to wish you the best of luck. It's nice having, you know, the establishment is well known, good reputation. It's down on my neck of the woods, you know, are in the town. So I wish you the best of luck. I'm sure it's going to continue being successful. And, you know, we'll all work out the staffing hurdles that we're facing now. I just had one quick question. I guess more Shauna, maybe it doesn't make a huge difference. But on the Commonwealth application, on page two, section six, does it matter that the percentage of ownerships are both listed at 100%? Or is that really just insignificant?
The, the A, B, C, C will amend that. That's not an issue.
Fifty, fifty, whatever it is.
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect, that's all I'm asked. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, and then Peter.
So welcome to, welcome to Only. So I wish you the best of luck. It's probably a little bittersweet for Vining. He's been there a while, but it's a great restaurant. And now Dean has examined the menu. I'm sure he's probably online elsewhere looking to see if the line fits. I'm sure you'll be seeing him in there. Anyway, I do wish you, wish you a lot of luck and welcome to Chatham. You guys would be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to offer my welcome to both of you. You know, I have a, I come from a restaurant family. Notice I didn't go into it.
You're smart.
You know, and I'm glad you said chef, because every once in a while, people talk about cooks. Well, there's a difference. My father was chef and an owner. And, you know, the business is tough, as Dean meant. And it's good to come in and do your own thing too, personally, you know. Bistro is a wonderful place. But, you know, it's always time to do something different and make your own. And I look forward to being there. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, want to just end that with a motion?
Sure, I motion, I move we approve the, I don't have to read the whole public hearing.
No, we need a public comment if any.
Oh, that's right. I'm very sorry. I do have to ask a public thing. Thank you, Dean.
Maybe you were planning to do it anyway.
Yeah, I was after the motion, but okay, we can ask for a public comment now if there's any questions or comments. Okay, we don't have any right now. So Peter, go ahead.
Thank you. I move that we approve the transfer, the, the, yep, transfer of the seasonal all alcohol beverages restaurant reasons from Catman U Incorporated, doing business as The Bistro, Stephen Vining, Manager, 593 Main Street Bistro LLC, doing business as Bistro on Main. Angela Porter, Manager, 593 Main Street, Chatham Mass, 2633.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comment from the board or the public, then I'll take a vote. Hearing none. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Which says aye. Congratulations, best wishes for this year. We will, we'll be sending good vibes down your way. Hope that you'll find some help. And have a successful season.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Care. All right, we are going to move into our biz agenda. We have a couple of items to discuss. One of them being the Recovery Build Alternative Peer Group, APG. We have Sheila House from the Harwich Youth Services here to give us a presentation. Sheila?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much. Oh, you, no?
No, you're fine. We can. Yep.
Thanks so much for, for having us. I have my colleagues Stephanie Brighty and Chris Hardy that are here tonight. And I, I'm just going to say a few things about Recovery Build and then go very quickly, the video, we have a brief video to show you that very nicely, you know, sums up what the program is. So I work for the town of Harwich with teenagers. I mentor them, I counsel them, I work with their families. And I got involved with this amazing nonprofit called Behavioral Health Innovators that the Recovery Build APG is sort of our current focus right now. And so what the program is, is that it, and it was designed with input from teens, which never happens with a lot of programming. We adults with very good intentions design programs and don't ask them what, you know, what they think. And this program is really different that way. So it was built on a model that came out of Texas where they've been around for 20 years. So Alternative Peer Group means that when the kids get involved in this program, which is a 12-week program, they get to know other kids and develop an alternative peer group because then they, they think about when they go back to school, who they're going to be hanging out with, and they talk very openly and very honestly with one another about what brought them to using substances. So typical client in our program would be a kid that'd be smoking pot three times a day. And they're saying, you know, this is really starting to get in the way of my, my day-to-day life. Or they might be drinking a couple of times a month, but when they drink, blackout, and they do really dangerous stuff, crazy stuff. Or they're starting to be dabble in stronger drugs. It, it's really more focused on recovery in a prevention model rather than when it's gotten way, way down the road, if you see what I mean. So I'm all about prevention. The Regional Substance Use Council in Barstow County, a big study where they, they studied substance use for a period of four different categories. So there was treatment, the legal system, harms reduction, and prevention. And I think it'll probably surprise you to know that the county was only spending less than 1% on prevention, which to me is like backwards. So what we're trying to do is, is buy the safety net to catch these kids early. So we're going to queue to the film, which I think Channel 18 has. And then Stephanie and Chris and I will answer any questions you have about it. We're just trying to get the word out to all, as many boards of select we can about it, so.
Thank you.
This substance, this thing go over your mind, and you're not.
Maybe this isn't wrong, maybe I'm overdoing it.
You don't even realize you're going down that downslope until you're almost towards the bottom. And then you're scrambling and you're like, what happened?
Turned into more of like, I need this, I need this drug, or else I'm gonna be sad all the time.
So before I knew it, it progressed worse and worse and worse to the point where a lot of them wouldn't even want to be around me if I were in it.
Recovery Build opened in 2018 to create a safe space for teenagers with substance use challenges. At Recovery Build, your mentors and counselors will work with the teenagers to explore a path of recovery. On CAH, there is no adolescent treatment for teenagers' substance use challenges. They have to go off CAPE. There is also no after-school program for teenagers with substance use challenges. When they come out of treatment and come back to CAPE CAH, they come back to same people, places, and things that supported and fueled their addiction.
It was just, it was, I was just because my friends were doing it, and that's what we did.
It very quickly became an everyday for me because of the people I was hanging out with every day. We're already doing that.
We're the only teen space on CAPE CAH deals with teenagers' substance use challenges.
Recovery Build is a safe place for them to go and kind of talk about what's happening in their life, and other people can relate.
They listen to one another, they listen to the stories about each other's substance use. And they feel like they found a safe, supportive, alternative peer group.
Or even the feelings that people saying, feeling empty and numb. And you can relate to that and use substances to cope with that. You can kind of acknowledge that you have a problem. So that's how I came into recovery is I saw myself in other people.
Kids that they brought were also either smoking pot or getting in trouble, you know, sort of part of their social group. So then they could come and be social together, but a safe place where they could hear about recovery.
One of the teenagers in the program shared that talking to our counselor, even though she looked old, she got him and she understood.
They were kind of funny. They were like, I don't mean like you're old or anything, but you're the first older person that I could talk to that really understood what I was going through.
Right.
And that I know meant a lot and held a lot of weight, and I think kept them coming back.
9% of adults who have an addiction today started using substances as teenagers. And for us, it's so critical to bring this population to resources as early on as possible to get ahead again of the disease of addiction. Recovery results from Alternative Peer Groups they have tracked since their existence. 85% of teenagers who are members of an alternative peer group will maintain their sobriety versus a 30% national average if they're not in an alternative peer group. Our hope is to scale this program out across the Cape so that there's an alternative peer group program in Provincetown, Truro, and Wealthgate and Sandwich, so that teenagers have access to this incredibly important resource.
It's just like changing, be like one little thing in one person, you know what I mean? And, and that can create a better life for them in the future.
One of our operating principles at our nonprofit, Behavioral Health Innovators, is to co-create solutions around substance use and mental health issues with people with lived experience. And we want to work with the teenagers themselves because they know best what resonates with them, how to speak about the issues that pertain to them so that their peers will hear the message that they're giving. Over the past 10 years, the United States has seen alarming increase in anxiety, depression, and suicide. And studies show younger generations are being at their hardest. One, three teenagers meet anxiety disorder criteria by age 18. One, five teenagers have experienced depression. 17.2% of high schoolers have seriously considered committing suicide. These are as a result of teen stressors such as bullying, school shootings, unrealistic expectations from social media, and gender identity issues among others. One of the hardest things for parents do is to reach out for help for their child. It's still a disease that has stigma associated with it. And there's a lot of misunderstanding about addiction. Parents and caregivers are probably the last people to see the impact of substances on their child. So it's even more critical for parents to get information about the program, get information from friends who have experienced Recovery Build, and to reach out for their teenager.
None of us are perfect. We all want to be forgiven for the things we've done. So we have to be forgiving with our friends and our family. Sometimes it's family members that, that are struggling. And you have to tell people, you know, you have to be upfront and up forward with people and make them aware of their behaviors, first of all. The problem is, it's really up to them.
I know why I wake up every day. I know what I have to do during the day, and I know what my goals in life are. And when I was young, I had no direction. I was completely uncertain about everything I was doing.
Find your passion. So why are you here? And I believe, once you find why you're here, there's a limit. And what I'm doing now is I'm giving back. I'm using my gift to tell the youth that you can be anything you want. And drugs and alcohol will deter that.
So Stephanie's, Stephanie and Chris are going to make a couple of comments, and then we just want to open up our questions. The website is, is absolutely spectacular. Chris Hardy did so much work on it. And it's wwwrecoverybuild.org. So I highly recommend you go check it out because it's got videos about the teenage brain that are so great for kids and parents to watch together and what, what happens with the developing brain use. And, and tons of videos of those peer heroes seen who have been through an alternative peer, amazing, amazing inspirational people. So we'll let Chris or Stephanie go.
Hi. Welcome, Chris, Stephanie. Yeah, yeah. Hello?
Yes, am I unmuted now? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Shereen. And Select Board appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all. When you were talking about reopening plans and the parade and all of that, I'm thinking in my mind, you know, about the impact COVID has had on teenagers especially, and how difficult it's been even for our program to keep these teenagers engaged. And I'm happy to say that one of the days that we meet is out in person, and we're outside, you know, maintaining social distancing and all of that. What, what I'd like to say is thank you. Thank you to the Town of Chatham. The Human Services Committee has given us two grants so far for this program. And you must, you, I'm sure noticed on the last page of the video that Duffy Health Center is our clinical partner in the program. And the money that we gotten and raised exceeded the program in a way that gave us visibility to the state. And recently, the, the media reported a state grant has been awarded to Recovery Build through Duffy Health Center to keep the program going. Just wanted to, you know, acknowledge the Town of Chatham. And I've been working with them for, you know, at least three or four years now on this project. So just wanted to thank you all for that. I also wanted to point out that La House, who is the counselor for the town of Harwich, who sees teenagers, we don't have that particular person in the town of Chatham, but she sees the Chatham residents that attend our program. And we've been working closely with Monomoy Ridge High School, their peer leaders, their alternative peer class, which they call Oak Street Class, and their health classes. And what we're hearing the teenagers, going back to what I said initially, is they are really worried right now about their friends. And the pain point seems to be not being able to communicate that concern in a way that gets a teenager in action or gets the family in action, find some resources to interrupt that substance use. So we're working very closely with the teenagers. Hired one of the Monomoy Regional High School students as our intern. She's working on a TikTok campaign. And what we're developing at Monomoy is really ambassadors for this program so that the stigma of reaching out for help is not there anymore. That they all know who is in trouble already. They see their friends who are blacking out. They see their friends who are not able to stop drinking. So they know who they're, who needs our support. And the final thing I just want to say is, you can imagine how, you know how hard it is for adults when they come out of treatment or back to the same people, places, and things, you know, that they were involved in when they were saying. It's that much harder for teenagers because they don't want anything to be wrong with them. You know, they already have that, that layer of subconsciousness that they don't want to be different from anyone else. And you heard some of that language in the video that these peer groups, the peers themselves are mirrors for each other. So when somebody's sharing about their troubles with substance use, all of a sudden a light goes off, and one of the other students will say, oh, my gosh, that's exactly what I'm doing, and maybe I have a problem too. It's a little kind of window to what we do. We want to amplify their voices and really get the whole tape with this, you know, exciting state award, the whole tape to rally around teenagers right now and just way ahead, way upstream of the addiction crisis. But thank you all.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And I would just, I just briefly, Chris Hardy, and I'm on board with Sheila and Stephanie.
Hi.
And I'm also a thirty-year Chatham resident. So I would like to thank you, as Stephanie did, for the board, the select board in Chatham, thinking ahead and granting us as we were getting started our pilot program. Our goal long term is to open up multiple sites across the Cape. Currently in Hyannis at the Peer Recovery Center. And as we get more funding, more grants, and now that COVID is relaxing, we are able to, as Stephanie said, start to meet in person and just via telehealth and ideally opening sites after school programs from Falmouth all the way up Eastham. Obviously, since we've been working with Monomoy High School, something in the Harwich-Chatham, hopefully we can open up soon. So that's the ultimate goal. And that reason we're talking to the select board now is to get the awareness about the program and try and get more people, particularly those parents and grandparents and caregivers who have kids that are struggling, to know there's a place they could go. So thank you for the time today.
Thank you. I know conversation with kids and, you know, with, between adults and kids is really important when you're talking about substance abuse. But there's nothing better than having, you know, a peer or friend be able to be supportive and understanding, as Stephanie said, and relatable to the experience. I can't imagine how a child feels coming out of a program and not really having any, anything to turn to. So this is, this is a really great program. Really happy you guys came before us to inform us about the good work that you're doing for, for our community. Everybody's hands up, so I'm gonna just turn it over to the board and for questions and comments right now. Peter Kokolas, Peter. Your name, Peter?
All right, I'll try that again.
There you go.
Thank you. And I agree with Shereen. Thank you very much for bringing this. It's always, it's always been a concern of mine. I never could understand it when I, back, never in high school, but when I, when I, when I started working, that medical insurance, medical profession, never, at that time, didn't take prevention into, into account. You know, they waited until something happened and then, then you had to pay for it. It just made sense to me if you, you should do something ahead of time. And if it's economic, you're gonna save money and besides saving somebody's lives. I, I feel, you know, substance abuse, and I go way back. And it was a problem when I was a teenager. I mean, it was around. We didn't have, we didn't have as many different kinds of ways to do things. You know, and you go to the fifties and sixties and all of a sudden you have a whole plethora of things that were out there for teenagers and anyone. You know, I applaud you for doing this. I'm glad you're doing it. I remember, I was, I was sort of surprised when I first moved here that substance abuse or alcohol abuse on the Cape was, was extremely high. It was a real, it was a crisis problem. And if it's a crisis problem with adults, it's gonna get down to students. So I, as you said, start with substance. I'm going through a, something, I'm preaching to the choir here. I think it's extremely important what you do. I think, I'm glad that we were able to, to provide at least a little bit of fun to do that. I think it was important when, when it happened. I would like to add one question. We talked about substance abuse and alcohol and, you know, pot and all of that. Vaping was, was a concern we had with our grandkids, you know, and they're now, well, one, a couple are going to college and the other ones are just starting to want to go to high school. Is that still an issue? I didn't hear you mention that, but it could be a real, from what I understand medically, it could really hurt you quickly and you could become more attuned to uh, reaching and it's more active, I guess, than, than some others. Well, I, I don't know. That's my question. Is that still an issue? You know, a lot of it has been regulated?
Yeah, it's definitely an issue, especially, we've had kids come on the program that are vaping very, very, very intense strains of marijuana. So it just, you know, it's dangerous what they're doing and stuff. So yeah, it's definitely a big issue. And it's, it's huge with nicotine too. There's kids get together and they smoke as many pods as they can in an afternoon, competing each other. So very often they're testing two packs of cigarettes, the equivalent of two packs of cigarettes. So yeah, still out there, yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you all for the presentation. And you actually, your presentation answered a couple of questions I was going to ask about. Landing through the Human Services Committee process, also your interaction with the regional school district. And with respect to the town landing, I think it's good for all of us to be able to put a face on, you know, what we support. So it's, it's great to see this. The video was wonderful. Peter mentioned alcoholism among else. A couple of years ago, we had a presentation at the Cape Cod and Island Selectmen Association from the ACC about the extent of alcoholism on the Cape. It's really, really dramatic. It's terrible. I've had occasion in my professional career and even currently to work with organizations. I currently serve on a board that helps fund support for physicians who are at risk or actually into substance abuse. It's a remarkable, remarkably painful fact of our society. So I commend, commend you on what you do. I think it's a really important effort, especially to try to get to kids when this is, these, these practices are being introduced at an early age. I had really a question. You had a slide with all the different stressors that kids are facing. I was just wondering, in light of the past fourteen months, has, have you seen an increase in, in problem with kids because of pandemic?
I'll let Sheila ask. I've sat, I sit on the Nash Council Behavioral Advisory Board and in their data, absolutely. Sheila can speak to, you know, what's happening here.
In my practice, gently, when you think that these poor kids have been grounded intentionally, their parents, you know, and how crazy that is, you know, just, oh, I have to be at home with them all the time for twelve months? Wow. Right at an age where they, all they want to do is be with their friends. So that's, that's what they, that's who they relate to. And the other thing is too, the online learning, being on, off, hybrid, whatever, you know, there's never been sort of regular pattern for them, you know? And they don't really love the screens. I think a lot of us thought that they would take them because they're on their phones all the time, but it's not the same thing. So they've felt very isolated, very anxious, very depressed. And now with the weather getting better and school being soon, I can see some of their spirits starting to lift noticeably. So it has, it has been a problem.
Thank you again.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Sheila, thank you. And Stephanie, nice to see you. And Chris, thank you all for coming here this evening and spending your time and educating us. It's good to see one of our recipients of our Human Resource Committee, Human Services Committee's large S, return and kind of give a report out on what the heck you're up to. It's really, really to get some feedback. You know, as you know, in my role at the Duffy, I'm very familiar with the APG program. Thrilled to hear that you got, we're funding again. I think it's wonderful. And so hopefully we'll be able to extend across the Cape, you know, with the support from state. So again, need to have you, education is all excellent and educating about preventing, you know, substance abuse, be it alcohol or otherwise, is very, very important for our youth in our community. So we've all been affected by it and hopefully the work you guys will, will prevent some, some untoward ways, some, you know, unfun ways. So anyway, thank you very much. Great to see you all. Great to see you.
Thanks, Jeff. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation very, very much. These are real issues with familiar faces and we can all relate to this in some way, shape, or form. We have stories we can tell that either friends, families have been impacted by this. So this hits, I mean, this is reality. Just a quick question. I know we're looking at expanding, you know, for regions, you know, you said Provincetown, Truro, and Sandwich. For the, for the, you know, Chatham-Harwich area, what's the vision as far as a facility? Or is it a, is it a, is it a brick and mortar standalone facility? Is it a section of a, of a community building? What's the, what's the ultimate goal to be grounded in this region to, to really, really cement this program in, you know, in the Chatham-Harwich area?
I'll start that, Stephanie. It's not so much brick and mortar as a requirement. It's, it's all of the above, Cory. So we, our first grant for this program came from a philanthropy class juniors at DY High School. And what they said to us is, whatever you do, I mean, first of all, they chose us out of a hundred applicants. They said our friends need this. We're worried about our friends. But whatever you do, don't make it a showy kind of obvious program. They want to be on the down under, Cory. So the way it works down in Houston, Texas, and we went down there before, we piloted ours and met with a lot of folks that are doing this work down there. It's in churches, in, you know, a part of a school. It's, it's indiscreet, I mean, indiscreet, two separate words, discreet locations. And actually, the current location in Hyannis, even though it is part of PIER Recovery Center on Main Street, access is in the back. It's next to the Brazilian hair salon. No one would know what is. I mean, I like it to, you know, teenagers, old days going for birth control and, you know, places where it's not obvious that they are going for these services. That's an important piece, Cory, but any of the above, I mean, it could be in a wellness center. Now, if there's a wellness center, and absolutely the lower Cape would have. When I was being interviewed for that video, I just ran out of names of towns. So, but every, really, the way it works in Houston, it's in every different town around Houston. And they actually are doing intramural kind of competitions with each other. I mean, it's just fascinating what they've created down there, but they've been at it for twenty years.
Well, I hope we as a community can come across the appropriate competitions and resources to assist this program moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Excuse me. Are there any final thoughts from, from Chris? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Other Chris, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Just one final request, and I don't know where, I'm familiar with our website, the town website. Is it possible to post the link to the video or to the website, which contains the video and a lot of other material Sheila talked to? Just to try and be another avenue to get the word out there to our town?
Shauna is, the town's working on a website, revamping it. And Shauna has been working on that and also there's communications that go out weekly. I'm pretty sure we can, we can accommodate something either on our human service page or through maybe a partner, community partnership. But I think it's, yeah, I think it's very doable to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. You're doing really important work. Anytime we can support our children, it's, it's the best work we do. So thank you and good luck going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. All right, we're going to move into, consider request for a special one-day wine and malt only alcohol permit. It's kind of weird that we're doing that. At the timing, my apologies. Refashion Chat Consignment is looking for a one-day wine and malt only alcohol permit for May twenty-eighth from five-thirty to seven. And the applicant is Carrie. I know she was losing her internet as we were speaking, Parcell. So Carrie, are you?
Hi, I am. I apologize. I just cut off the video.
Oh, that works usually. All right. Well, welcome, Carrie. Anybody have any questions for Carrie on her application before we move forward? Do, I do. Just one thing, Carrie, I did notice in the lot of where you're located, you opened a couple, a month or so ago, be a month ago, is that it's within a block, has shores on the bottom and then there's apartments above. Have you spoken to the residents in that area about your doing a little, a wine and, and a wine thing on the, on the deck outside?
I have not, only because we're intending to close at seven PM.
All right. Okay, I just, I think it probably might be a nice thing to do, just to give people a heads up that you're having an event involving or potentially having an event involving alcohol outside.
No, that makes sense. They have all been invited, so I'm assuming that they're knowledgeable, but I hadn't exactly said like, that's what we're doing.
Okay, well, great. All right. Any questions or motion from the, from board?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion.
Sure, head dean.
This is a new business. I know you and I, you and I were at the ribbon cutting this time. I move to approve a special one-day alcohol permit for one malt beverages only. For Carrie Parcell as a representative of Refashion Chatham can sign for service at seventeen oh five Main Street on Friday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, five-thirty PM to seven.
So this is good? Okay, Peter seconded. If there's no further discussion, take a vote. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. You've been approved, Carrie. Good luck with your event.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate Madam Chair and board. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Have a evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to our next is a town landing special use permit. This is from, yeah, I'm in the right, yeah. Ken Eldridge, Ken is the operator of Monomoy Bound. He's a long career personal fisherman that has been doing charters most recently. And I don't know if Ted Keon is on to give us any background or feedback.
Yes, Madam Chair, I am on.
Hi there.
Hi there. Good evening, folks. I think everyone knows Kenny Eldridge.
And Kenny, are you there as well?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Kenny, you may be muted. Kenny, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
I can, Ken.
Oh, good. Like for a video conference.
All right, good for you.
Just a very quick background, again, everyone is Kenny, I believe. He's a longtime fisher and operated charter operation out of the fish pier for a number of years. I guess his interest is to downsize slightly and to move to a smaller boat, have smaller groups and do a less active, although still very important shuttle service out to Monomoy for fishermen, birders, and an occasional deal tour. So he has all the appropriate licenses, registrations, et cetera. He will receive the insurance if the board approves his application. So Steph has recommended rubber master and community development support to support this application.
Okay, so we're looking for town land use at Barn Hill for a twenty-two-foot gift. And you're basically proposing to run an operation July, August, and September. And it's, but you would only be, you wouldn't be running in Clement weather. There is no parking. You're disposing of your waste generated. Your clients will either park your residence or be transported through a ride share. So anything else you want to add?
No, that sums it up very well. Ted said it all. I'm probably looking at your proposal now. It's pretty simple.
Okay. And you have your proper licenses, obviously, you have your, your boats registered and you have your commercial.
The register of the boat? The register of the boat?
Yeah. So you have your, yeah, captain's license. I'm just trying to cover it because.
All set.
All right. Jeff's got his hand up.
I, I do indeed. Uh, Mr. Eldridge has dotted all his I's and crossed all his T's with this application. So I therefore offer the following motion that we approve this town landing special use permit request for Mr. Eldridge. Godspeed, Ken. Have fun. Have fun.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Corey. And any further questions or discussion? If not, I'll take a vote. All right. Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Aye.
Absolutely. No way. No. Aye.
The chair says aye. And, uh, good luck with, uh, good luck with your summer. And sure, um, my bound is I, I spend all my summer on Montemoy if I could. Best place on earth. All right. Thank you. All right. Take care, Ken. All right. Um, request for fireworks on July 1st, uh, 2021 at Veterans Field. This is, uh, our request from Steve West from Chatham Angler on behalf of Chatham Bars Inn and as it says, other local sponsors. Um, do we have a little background on this? I have a mem, I have an email exchange if everybody has it. But is Steve West on the call?
I am.
Hi, Steve. What, um, you want to give us a little bit of, um, so on this?
I've been, I've been, I've been rehearsing and practicing this for a while now. So you're going to bear with me. Uh, no, seriously. Hello, select members and, and everyone out there that's, that's watching and listening. My name is Steve West and I'm the president of the Chatham Athletic Association. And we're the organization that's responsible for the Chatham Anglers Summer College Baseball Team. And as you know, I'm here today to request permission to hold the fireworks display event at Chatham's Veterans Field on Thursday, July the first. And I was glad to see the, uh, early vote by the select board on, on the July 4th or July 3rd, I guess, parade this year. I, hopefully that bodes for my request. And Peter, your comments too. And I know that you were the dissenter before. I have optimism for you here. Um, so to set the table a little bit, give you the background, Shereen, that you're asking for. Um, the Chatham Anglers, uh, with support from Chatham Bars Inn and the other sponsors, including the Chatham Handy Manor, Kinlan Grove Realty, Chatham Cookware, and the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we're planning to hold this event last year at Veterans Field on July 2nd of 2020. Obviously, you know, that, uh, didn't happen, but, uh, it was publicized in the Chronicle last year and we'd moved through most of the approval process. We'd secured support from the police and fire chiefs and from Park Rec Commission. And before we, to you folks, uh, obviously plans were scuttled. So we've now fast forward at 15 months and when Governor Baker recently announced the message that's reopening date moving forward from August 1st to May 29th, um, yours truly and others immediately recognized, uh, July 1st fireworks display was, was not possible. And we kind of thought it would be a fantastic event to kick off the July 4th weekend. So we quickly put a plan motion to make it, make it a reality. It's been a busy couple of weeks, let me say. Uh, my first call back was to the fireworks company as I knew everybody else was probably doing the same I was doing. And we're fortunate to, uh, be okay with the fireworks company on the July 1st date. And, and the company, by the way, is North Star Fireworks. And that's the same company that handles our first night fireworks, has number of years, both Oyster Pond and at the Veterans Field. So they're, uh, uh, they're, they're totally comfortable with, uh, with the Chatham. And then when we got that approval, I reached out to the lead sponsor, which is Chatham Bars Inn, spoke with Gary Ulander, and he's excited and wanted to do this. So I knew then we were full speed ahead. So next visited with, uh, Mark Plina. Uh, we personally set the date on the first, uh, just in case there was going to be a fan concert the following day on Friday or the parade on Saturday or Sunday. So the first was kind of the date we settled on indicated that the police could be, uh, expect, they were, were fine with, they could handle the staffing needs for, uh, the event on the, on the first. So then I reached out to David DiBicoli at the fire, uh, fire chief, and he says he's ready to go and process the first paperwork as soon as I could get it to him. So, uh, we're, we're at that point. I went, went forward to the park, uh, director, Dan Tobin, and actually met with him at the field, uh, reminded him about our plan or told him about our plans. And he was, he was supportive of that. And he recognized that, uh, the event had already been reviewed, endorsed by the park and the commission last year. So those, those are kind of the steps we've taken in the last week to 10 days. Uh, I know in the next questions you're going to ask or, or, you know, well, tell me a little bit about the show itself. So I'll do that real quickly too, if you don't mind. Um, the fireworks show, it's going to be similar. If, if you've seen the first night fireworks at Veterans Field, it'll be a similar show. Uh, we expect it to be a little bit grander, uh, but the same format, uh, fireworks show. We're using the same company that puts together that show for us each year. Uh, so they're very familiar with Chatham's protocols, the fire department, the permit process, et cetera. Um, the show going to begin shortly after dark as most fireworks display do. We anticipate that'll be around nine o'clock, uh, because Chatham sunset that night at 8:18 PM. The show is expected to last about 20 minutes. Uh, the viewing areas around the field will be set up in the same manner locations as, as, and I was actually involved with the first night fireworks for a number of years. So I'm very familiar with how that's set up. Um, so we're going to set it up in the same, same spot as the first night fireworks, have the same, uh, area cordoned off, uh, to keep spectators the, the distance they're required to be away from the fireworks. And then, um, we also use the Veterans Field public address system, system to communicate any, any messages that we need to do of, about safety, COVID, or, or anything else that may be necessary at the time. Uh, bottom line, I'm hopeful to get the, the, the board approval tonight. Uh, we believe it's a great way to kick off the July 4th weekend. And I can tell you more and more, but it's been a long meeting for you guys tonight. And I've done the whole thing too. So, uh, I hope I can get your support, you know, to support this event. We'll have to take any questions and comments now.
Thank you, Steve. Um, uh, Peter's got a comment or question. Let's start with Peter.
How you doing, Steve? Nice to see you again.
Want to host the, host all player this summer?
Yeah, I, well, you know, we talked about this.
I know. I'm just teasing.
By the way, he has a good friend that's going to be the Changle, uh, Chatham age year, but that's beside the point. I have to, I have to see him. In any case, uh, but as usual, Steve has done his work and he, he always does a great job of getting things set up. And, uh, I personally like the fireworks, you know, in, in, uh, Veterans Field, uh, even for first night. I think it's a, it's a right time to do it. And I appreciate, and, you know, all I said, um, and had to do with the parade, I, I feel that from my own personal state, there's be a room to move around there. Yeah, it's just almost 60. You can do it, it, it well. And I, I don't have any problem with the fireworks. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you did, you're, you're doing it. I'd even make the motion, Madam Chair, if.
Okay. If you want to make a motion now, then I will definitely, um, if everybody okay, um, then we continue the conversation. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I move to approve the July 1st fireworks at Veterans Field. That's done.
Okay. That's good. Thank you, Dean. All right, Dean, you, your hand up next.
Yeah, just a question, Steve. Uh, good to see you at a formal meeting. Uh, I think it's been a while since you were on the finance committee. Um, uh, just one question, Steve, did, you mentioned that the park and rec had approved it. Like, do you have to technically go back to them and get another vote or?
Uh, not a, Dan Tobin thinks so. Uh, we were kind of in a, in a rush because I got the permit process started. Um, so, you know, that was, they're not meeting for another couple of weeks, but.
Okay. Well, clearly you've, uh, done your homework on this. I think it's a great event. I agree with everything Peter just said. So I'm very supportive of this and thank you for an excellent presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
I, I'd have one little goodge in my head, Steve, and I guess, uh, I'm going to depend on, on the fire department with this. You know, we, we have pretty bony conditions right now, you know, in Chatham. And, and I'm just, you know, have, as long as they feel they're okay with it, then, then I'm not going to have too, too much of a concern about it. But I want to put it out there, um, um, that, that we are in a drought.
Understand and I appreciate that. And I'll make sure I visit with the fire department on that. And if anything, they can, they, they're concerned, they can certainly water down the hill. Uh, the, the field itself will be, will be, uh, won't be dry, but the, but the surrounding hill, uh, they might want to water that down.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Jeff?
Yeah, it's a good point, Shereen, with the drought. Um, Steve, good job. Did your homework. You did your homework last year. It's, it's great. You rooted and refreshed it. And here we go. Uh, can't wait. Good luck.
Thank you.
Corey?
Uh, no. Yes, thank you. Uh, still seeing you. Um, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this, uh, request, uh, to do the fireworks. I think it'd be a nice, uh, little touch to kick off the, uh, the summer. Uh, just a mechanical question. Is this going to be, um, go, no go, uh, depending on the weather? Or if the weather is not favorable the first, um, what's the plan? It's just, do they got to pull the plug or you're going to try to do it on like Friday?
Nope. It's a, it's a go, no go. We've got a aim on the field on Friday and Saturday. So we can't do it those nights.
Okay. Started to get clarity on that. So, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. If there's no further comments from the board, I'll take a vote on this. Okay. Um, Dean?
Aye.
Corey? Jeff?
Aye.
Peter? You're muted, Peter. I need a, I need a vermoat.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Chair says aye. All right. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Let the summer begin, right?
We're, we're excited. Thank you.
All right. And luck with the, uh, anglers this year too.
Yep.
All right. All right. Our next, uh, is, uh, um, West Chatham Way Mass Dot request to complete project on or before June 18th, 2021, uh, via night work. Um, I guess, uh, we have Director Temple.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board.
Hello.
Um, I'm, I'm here tonight, uh, on behalf of Mass, uh, Mass Dot for a, um, request that's made through the department as well as through the select board to clean, complete this project on before July 18th. Uh, as you saw in my agenda report, their intent really is to complete the project, uh, before the 18th. They gave them a little bit of window for, uh, in Clement weather that we might have that might affect their paving operation. Um, they, there was some chance of precipitation on Wednesday during the night when they're looking to do the remaining approximately 930 tons that are remaining for the top horse of pavement. So they put that off, uh, because of the tack hoes between the, the two layers and push that off to Thursday night. And, uh, it's intimated that they'll probably complete it between 7:00 PM on the side street or at a quiet and be on the main road probably by 10:30, quarter of 11. And they're probably everything completed by about five o'clock. And I know, I know they've said seven to seven, but they want to get out of there before, you know, traffic hits. I would assume probably, I've asked them to beep up to make sure that they have 18 trucks on around. That would be two hours to complete everything. Um, so it, it shouldn't be a long process. Um, the hardest, hardest part of project is doing the, uh, doing the roundabouts that pull the two poles on, on the side, complete all the straight runs, and then jump to the S I once that's set up and, and that'll be it. Um, right now, you've probably noticed they missed all the structures. They've mill areas that were a little bit high that needed to be done. Uh, they're in really good shape. Everything's all, all set to go. Um, the only thing remaining really is, uh, once they do the paving, uh, they'll want a schedule to be cleaning out of the basins, which will be done at nighttime. It'll be one night operation. They'll go up one side of the street, opening every space and cleaning that out, and then coming down the other side doing as well. Um, traffic marking, it's really a two night, uh, thing, um, only because they have a lot of hash marks and a lot of, um, you know, uh, stop lanes. You have your, your cross watch is a second night really. It's like last night, the, uh, the town, we ended up doing probably close to, uh, fif- uh, 100, 115,000 feet of yellow line last night and approximately 48,000 feet of, of white far line. We did all that in one night. And like tonight, we'll be doing cross walks. So it's, the way they have it set up is, is the way it should be done. Um, I really think that they've done sooner than they, they predict on this. If they can get some miscellaneous cleanup for the internal sites that they have where their storage is and some of the other stuff, if they can get that done this week, uh, by the end of the week, I'm sure do that. So they'll have less of a, a problem trying to meet the deadline. So I, I really think it wrapped up sooner than what they're saying. Um, the only, the only one day that they really need to do, uh, the driveways, they really need to do the driveways at night. Um, I think it would be too costly for them because of the mix that they would have for the small, meeting the small driveways within pavement. Um, I don't think they could keep a plant open for that small of a load. They're probably talking 75 ton. Um, it would be astronomical to try to keep that. So I, I, I really think it's something that, uh, the request is a legitimate request. And as you know, when they went through that whole pandemic with the rest of us, um, a lot of their, their work got postponed, dragged out. And, um, I think they would like to, to done with this, this construct season in June. And then the only thing they have left is, uh, as one of the callers had, uh, mentioned in one of the comments, um, they would have their walk, final walkthrough. Once they do the final walk, the state normally invites the municipality out. We would, we would be invited to go out and do the walk with the state, uh, as well as the engineer and go through and pick apart anything that we think that is an issue that we want to get addressed. We would be, uh, put that walkthrough. Uh, that includes, uh, the planting and the pending normally from when they accept the job as substantially complete, that's when one year starts the ticking for the planted items. Uh, so if the contractor has to come back, there's noted any trees that look like failing, uh, and they replace it, it's when they replace that, those trees that might be failing during the summer here. So if they had to come back in the fall and say replace two or three trees, that one year for those two would start from the date that they replant. So, um, you know, it's, it's pretty, pretty centered operation as far as mass highway projects. And, um, you know, we have a pretty good checklist. We'll make sure that, uh, everything gets done in accordance, the, the way that it should be, uh, in our states as well.
So, um, on a, on the timeline walkthrough, w- 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 how long after everything's completed, does that walkthrough happen, Tom?
Um, well, chances are depending if, where we're, we're really approaching the summertime, I would probably say that I would suggest that if there's, uh, things that need to be done, I wouldn't recommend doing those during the, during, you know, fourth lie and all that coming forward. Would probably put that off into September. What that does is gives us a longer period of time for the one year completion. So once they complete all those items, then that one year starts ticking or all the, the project is totally accepted.
So you're, you're saying that we'd probably have the walkthrough in September or the fall? Is that what?
The walkthrough would happen, you know, as soon as done with all the punch lists that are listed here, we would do the walkthrough. But if there's items that need to be addressed that, you know, we think that would interrupt the operations of the businesses and the residents out there, then we would probably have them delete that work until the fall when, when it's more conducive to do that.
Um, because I had noted that one of the public comments was about, uh, the right, the lines on the right side travel lanes, um, uh, issue and, and whether that could be addressed at some point.
We can, you know, it's something where the, the, the lines that are out there are only temporary in nature. And the ones that they're doing when the payment is done is, is going to be in some accordance, in accordance to the approved plans that were, were approved of construction. Um, we certainly can, I certainly can contact the state tomorrow. And we have a Bible meeting coming up on Friday. So I certainly can, and say to them that you, they not normally don't say no. If the, if the pavings and the piping has already gone down, they would definitely say no. But where they're looking to do the bidding, we might have the ability to sway them, especially where there's a shared use path. So, and they've been pretty good to the time of Chatham bars, as some of the requirements come back and do redoing some of the things that are done. So, um, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask. I mean, nor, I would say that right now it's, it's, it's going to be done in accordance to the approved plans unless we get something in writing to them and they respond back to us that they're willing to, to do that. I do know we'll take their, their engineer to come out and take a look at plans to, to make sure that it's not go ahead and do anything with the traffic, uh, litigation for that whole project. So, uh, if it was the blessing, and they might say yes to that, that request.
Okay.
I certainly will find a night. What I can do is get back to you, Shereen, and to the board and let you know what that, what their comments were on that. And by the way, there we can make determination and try to close every, all at once.
Okay, great. Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, Tom. I truly wanted to, uh,
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Tom. I truly wanted to press a little bit more for some additional detail on the one year business. Exactly what does that mean? And when does it start or does it start different points? You mentioned the trees, but the question was asked if find items that might need correction. Is what the one year means, we have a year to those requests and press those corrective measures to be taken? Is that what that all means?
That's correct. And what it means, the contractor is on the hook to make the necessary repairs. If it makes it on the list for both the town and the state, then the contractor has to fix those repairs. And once those repairs are made, it's normally that one year timeframe. And then after that point, if there's other issues that happen, then it becomes a state issue, not the contractor. So they still would have to come out and fix whatever the issues are. We would just have to put in writing, request that they come out and fix something if there's an issue. But it's no longer the contractor's responsibility. With respect to the tree and also the planting, and I've had, I've had projects where they were state projects and the grass didn't, the grass didn't grow to the first cut. And so if the grass dies, if we have an extremely hot, you know, summer and grass doesn't take, then the contractor would be responsible to come back and loam and reseed that and fertilize those areas in the fall. It's that planting season. So that's another, definitely probably be on the list as a red flag to them moving forward anyways, so.
Yeah, I'm still not clear on when the one year starts. Does it start once you've identified an item that needs to be corrected? Or does one year start once punch list is put together? And items on that have to be corrected within a year? Or just not entirely, when it starts and when it ends? And what happens in the one year?
If they complete the project, everything on the project, on say, we'll say June 8th. If they complete everything on June 8th, we do the walkthrough on, you know, that next day too. And we have identified all the issues and problems. Once they complete that work, the one year starts from when they completed that work for ever to be finalized.
So it's basically one year from the completion of project?
Correct.
Okay, appreciate that. The only other comment I want to make is, and I'm not surprised in my saying that I think Lawrence Lynch has done a great job. They obviously are a highly competent company.
Tremendous job on all different projects. They were also our contractor that won the low bid for the counted. And as you saw last year, they did like probably 10 or 12 reeds in sidewalk areas because they were our contractor. And we'll miss them this year. They didn't in the bid in Chatham for this coming. So we'll have another contractor out and hopefully we get the same results, but they're very nice to work with.
They did the work in our neighborhood. I think they're very respectful to property owners. Thank you.
Thanks Dean. Corey?
Thank you. So during the seven to seven window for the work, what type of impact are we going to have to businesses and residents and stuff like, just kind of give a little summary, what it's about?
Yeah, what they'll do is they're going to do side at a time. So there'll be pain coming down. If they do the north side, they'll be doing the north side of the road and they'll have the traffic going down the left side, down the side, back and forth with police detail getting past where they're paving. Similar they did when they did the temporary, the binder course, they worked the traffic all sides. So they kept everything open. It'll be the same thing. The difference will be that it's happening at night and you'll have traffic out there at 10, 11, 12, one o'clock in the morning. So it'll be a lot easier for them to get a bulk of that done with very little interruption to the business and or the residents.
So essentially all the businesses will be accessible with maybe some minor interruptions?
Yeah, there'll be some minor inconveniences, especially because they'll need to roll the mist in front of where their entrances be to make sure that it's set up, people can turn into that. So once, once the lodge rollers go by, you'll have like the eight ton or 10 ton rollers by, once they put the three ton rollers onto it, then cars can turn into that area. And you know, we don't have to worry about them, you know, doing damage to their car with your hood makes things stuck to their, the bottoms of their car and their tires, et cetera.
I think I say, I say we all want to get this prep wrapped up. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks Corey. Jeff?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'd like to see this project wrapped up and wrapped up well. And so I would support certainly the working, the work at night, if that's what you're asking for, Tom. I think that's what you're asking for. And Dean has kind of stolen my thunder here, but Lawrence Lynch has done an excellent job. And they've communicated very well with the businesses. They've gone above and beyond, to be honest. They've been really great, you know, partner down there, I hear and I'm told. With really good local leadership, communicating with the businesses, what's going on and when. If we close out the project and we're happy and something structural is not a satisfier. And if we know that before it's finally closed or even after they close, are we on the hook for anything just thereafter? If we wanted to.
The state would be on the hook for that to make sure that things get their way. And if it's still within the timeframe, then they'll go to the contract.
Okay, I'm, okay, thanks, Tom.
Okay, Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with what my colleague said, especially when it comes to that contractor. Two, two questions. One goes back to the, the marking of the highway that Shereen had brought up. Exactly what are we going to ask for? That we don't need a high speed bicycle path there? I thought we had some discussion about that anyway. And I guess that's what the question is. Is that, is that correct?
I believe that, you know, I believe Lynn's question was that right now the temporary line painting is only two feet from the edge of curbing. The plans call for it to be five feet from the edge of curbing. She was wondering if we could ask the state to reduce it back to the two feet edge of curbing was what I got out of that. So you know, in essence, they'd be sharing the road, you know, that lane instead of having their own exclusive lane is, you know.
I guess I would agree with that, especially since we do have a bike path, you know, a combined multi-purpose path that's already there. And hopefully they'll read. The other, just a comment, I was surprised. I expected when I drove through there, it was later at night. It was more like 10 o'clock. And lighting seemed fine. I mean, is it just me? Did they turn it down or?
Actually, that's the, the lights went on the first, the first night last week and I was kind of shocked. We still have the option to turn down every other light out there to, you know, reduce that even more. So I was, I was amazed that they used the 4,000 lumens that we had suggested, which is what you would see in a typical subdivision design, you know?
The only one that was problem was across the street. If you're down the street, you go, what's that to do with? Anyway, that's, that's my only comment.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion to recommend?
So move, Peter.
Okay, second? Jeff, okay. Any comments? I'll take a vote. I don't see any. I do have hands up. I have Peter and Jeff, but I think that's a residual. Okay, fine. I'll take a vote. Dean?
Hi.
Corey?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Chair says aye. All right, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Motion? Thanks, Tom. A motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move, there we go.
Second? Everybody wants to second that one. All right, let's take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Hi.
Peter?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. All right, so Jill, thank you for, to you and the staff for prepping and present tonight. And good night, Adam, and be next week. All right.